This has been a priority for me. What we have done is cobbled together city funding, state funding, water funds, money that comes out of my discretionary budget to use for capital improvements because it's important. Shared Road is crumbled beneath our eyes, it's taken a long time. I am someone who prides myself on working on the infrastructure of our community. We have done resurfacing and lots of projects throughout the neighborhood, and now we're poised to do this. The goal is to do it one time. It's going to be painful, but we're going to get through it. The other thing I pride myself on is being able to communicate. And our office is going to communicate with the buildings on a weekly basis because this project is going to jump around. There are going to be times when buildings are going to have their driveways closed for a couple hours during the day, but we're going to work hand in glove with all of you. We're going to work hand in glove with your buildings to notify you about what's going on, so that there's no surprises. So, this project is going to cost $850,000 to $900,000 collectively. I'm going to introduce a number of people, but I'm going to start with Tom LaPorte from the Water Department, who is going to talk about scope of the project, and he's going to introduce representatives from the construction company that are going to do the construction work, as well as Paul Leavis from the Department of Transportation that's going to talk about any other questions or answer any other questions. While we do this, we are also going to work with the CTA to make sure that the bus routes are able to continue. We're also going to make sure that traffic that comes into our neighborhood knows that there's a closure of one lane, so that traffic will be diverted to Broadway and go north and vice versa will come south. So, there's no easy way to do this. We could do it piecemeal over a course of a number of years, but it was better felt to try to do this all in one fell swoop. So I'm going to ask you to patience for this project, and we'll be back, I'm assuming, many times to talk about status. So, with that, I also want to introduce my chief of staff, Dan Luna. Dan works with me to help deal with the big and little issues that we have in our community. So, one other point I want to make is tomorrow night there's going to be a virtual meeting, town hall regarding the fire sprinkler efforts that the Fire Marshal from the state has. I want you to know that I am totally against his proposal and helping him organize in my other powers to try to stop this madness. So, I would encourage all of you to, if you can come to the meeting, fine. If you can't, go online and check it out. Otherwise, send us letters and Jerry Goodman will fill you in before the meeting nights out about how to communicate so we can get information to our legislators, to the appropriate people. So with that, I want to bring up Tom LaPorte from the Water Department. I would ask one question, if you could hold the questions until you hear the presentations, from Mr. LaPorte as well as the construction company, and then we'll stay and answer as many questions as possible. The other part of this is that some of the answers we may not have tonight, but we are working to have those answers to make this project as seamless as possible. Tom?
Good evening. My name's Tom LaPorte, I'm an Assistant Water Commissioner, and I feel like this is a homecoming. My first big project when I joined the city 11 and a half years ago was the sewer lining project on Sheridan Road. And the person who talked me comes about everything I know about neighborhood relations is Kelly Wolken. He's just an amazing mentor, and I followed the model that she set forth for me and consulted her since then many times. So, it just feels like I'm home, and this is a neighborhood that I understand, and I understand the concerns and needs. And first and foremost, we know how to put in a water main, and you'll hear all about it and how we plan to do it. It's less dramatic and it's going to be less constricting than the sewer project was. But, one of the things that we've learned particularly in this neighborhood, which is so densely populated and has a wide diversity and a big diversity of people in the range of seniors and people with mobility challenges and driving, you know, and the congested traffic, being good neighbors is half the battle. Being good neighbors and able and being responsive to people's concerns and inconveniences and that kind of thing. Construction always has its inconveniences, but between the Alderman's Office, which is very responsive and very easy to work with, Dan Luna, who's one of the great partners in the city, and Philly Wolken and Asco, Sherrod, I forget the right acronym. Asco is the one, okay. We can solve any problem, we can do it quickly. We have people here who are very responsive, our contractors are going to be great at this. So as problems come up, don't hesitate, don't suffer in silence, call the Alderman's Office, call Asco, call me. I have, by the way, 100 copies of our construction plan, the package that I think I've already been passed out, but we have them for you. Along with some of the water bottles, so you can sit in the beltings and enjoy the work and that kind of thing. But what I'd like to do is, having introduced myself on the theme of being good neighbors and doing this smoothly for you, I'd like to introduce Quentin Clark, who's a sergeant for the whole project from the Water Department's perspective, and ask him to introduce Joel Kennedy and the other people here who are here to part with us.
Hi, thank you all for coming. My name's Quentin Clark, this is Joel Kennedy from Joel Kennedy's Construction. This is also a hall of the lastes. We work closely on numerous projects. We probably get about 30 miles here on the north side of Chicago this year, so these guys are professionals, work very closely on a lot of projects. On this project, just wanted to give you some basic details. Our water main work is going to be in the west curb line, going from Thorndale north to Devon. That will be phase one of the project. Phase two of the project will be coming back and doing, again, in the west curb line from Thorndale, or, excuse me, from Granville going south to Thorndale. So, it's Granville to Devon, then phase two is Granville to Thorndale, by the spoke. Any questions you guys have? All the work we're going to be doing is going to be on the west side of the street. Very few instances where we'll be crossing over to the east side. Do you all have any questions?
Let me add that we're going to be having a traffic plan. Do you know about, do we have that at this point, about how the northbound and southbound lanes are going to be running during the day?
Traffic's going to be coordinated through CDOT. We have three lanes. One lane's going to be closed 24/7, the west lane. The three other lanes will be open, so during rush hour traffic, the two southbound lanes will be open. And in the evening, that, the northbound, the two northbound lanes will be open. So, we'll flush the traffic at that point and open it up.
During the first day or two of this, you can expect a little bit of traffic congestion as people, particularly from northern suburbs, find their way and realize what's going on. The experience of any constructive project is that you have, the first couple of days, people figure out what's happening, then they find their ways around it. So, the first day or two is not going to be indicative about how the entire project's going to run, and we'll be putting out lots of word to the traffic services and that kind of thing, so it doesn't become a kind of a traffic nightmare. Trying to think what else we should tell you. There are a couple of times when water will be turned off from buildings. And we do this, whenever we do this by plan, we give you 24 hours notice, and you should probably have some water on hand just in case. But the 24 hours notice should be sufficient, and it will always happen when we plan it. The times we plan it are at the beginning when we're tying the old main, tying the new main into the system and beginning to lay it down the street. The second time is when building by building, we connect the old, we take your individual service and transfer it from the old main to the new main. And that's, you know, with the size of these buildings, it's going to be a three or four hour job. Then at the tail end of the project, when we're putting the main into service, we turn everybody's water off again for a period, again, a few hours, and make that connection. Now, we say a few hours, and we're always, when you see our notices, they're going to be a little bit longer, probably than we think that it's going to take. But we don't know what we're going to find when we get down there, if there's a complication, if those valves don't work on these very old mains, that kind of thing. We want to give ourselves enough time so that you don't say we broke the crops, basically. The other times that it might break, and you might lose water without any warning whatsoever, is when there's an emergency shutdown. Emergency shutdown is not uncommon, particularly with mains this old and brittle. What can happen is, we put the old, the new main next to the old main, so all of the vibration that takes place as we do our work can crack the old main. That's why we replace it. It's brittle, it's prone to cracking and to breaking, and then there's water all over the place, and you just have to shut it down for safety reasons. It takes two or three hours, probably, we can probably fix it with a clamp. But that's what's happening then, and we won't be able to tell you in advance. We may, even if we're able to tell the building, depending on the building, the word may not reach you all that promptly. So, don't be surprised when that happens. The other times that can happen is if we get a service and we don't expect to be where it is. You know, the maps we're working for are generally accurate, but if there's been an inaccuracy decades ago and we don't know about it, that means we may get a service pipe, there's water all over the place, we go through the process to fix it. So those are the times that might, that it might shut down. And I think now, unless, don't be, this is Joel Kennedy, who leads the company, heads the company that's doing the work.
I think, I think Tom, Tom did everything on point there. We're with everyone's health, we'll, with any luck, if everything goes well, we'll have it done by Labor Day. Our Porsche, our Porsche, but if it was put in in 1890, I think you can expect a few delays. But our biggest thing is on safety. Someone can be thinking about our people, in addition to patients, getting into your old, with some people, about a month ago, the resident got out of their car, moved the barricade to Ray Redding or our ditch. Luckily, luckily, this didn't hurt anybody, but it's just a...
Don't do that, don't do that.
We appreciate your patience, and again, in a month, whatever, if it goes okay, I think we'll go all the way. So, we'll be on the right track with the water main portion. And I think, Paul, you have a, a road. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Joel. Let's go to questions, yes.
So, the people between Hollywood and Farquhar and the Tethers, as much as you want to shut down, the valves will probably shut down.
Say that one more time.
As far as the water shut down, I said...
Yes, sir.
For the people in Hollywood and Farquhar, the Tethers, as much as the valves will shut down.
No, I don't think so. Correct me anytime if I'm wrong in this.
From, if the valves, if the old valves hold, then we won't, you won't be shut down at all. It's just a matter of, we don't know if these old valves hold or not.
And what he's talking about there is, the valves in the old water main are as old as the main itself, so if they, for some reason, don't operate properly, then we extend the shutdown, either north or south, and find one that will work. So there is a chance that's out of Thorndale, because something between Thorndale and Granville isn't working to be effective. Yes, sir.
Yeah, when does it start?
When do we start?
Our hope is to start on Monday.
Okay. And on that, are you letting the suburb areas know well in advance about this work so that they can make alternate routes?
Yes, in a couple of ways. We're not only putting it on the radio with all the traffic services and all the radio stations and TV stations, but I also call in all the individual city halls and tell them that they have to email us, please blast us out to everybody who may come to Chicago. I may try to be in the tubs, because I got stuck about this tonight.
Are you going to shut down, shut down the lane only in the construction zone, or are they going to share the road?
We quit.
It's our expectation that Monday to Friday will only close the southbound lane, the westerly most, southbound lane. If we proceed with Saturday work, it's possible, and very likely, we would have a full detour.
I don't think you understood my question.
No, she's wondering, tell me if I'm right on this, is will we have, will we close only the part that we're using and allow people to use all four lanes other than that?
Tom, how do you repeat the questions for people?
I will.
I believe, I believe that the westbound lane, for the full extent, all the way from Devon to Thorndale will be closed.
To how though?
Well, a couple hundred feet south of Thorndale, that will be where we taper the traffic down.
Hi, I'm Paul D. Lastes, I go for Joel Kennedy, I'm his engineer. In the area south of Thorndale, we'll have some barricades up to help taper the traffic down and narrow it down to the lanes we want to direct it to. So they'll be, you know, we'll start the tapering south of Thorndale, and also up in the east-west piece of, you know, Devon or east-west piece of Sheridan Road, we'll have some tapering up there, which is outside of our water line.
Let me ask you, but the rationale is are keeping that entire length of Sheridan Road to three lanes permanently rather than just moving our work so that's...
While we weren't going to, when we fill our trench back in, which is about four feet off of the curb line, we're going to fill that flush with material, and then see where there's a three-step process. You know, we put the main in, then we put the services in, then we put the concrete base in, so it's just, it's not going to be surface enough to drive on properly. It wouldn't be safe.
Yes.
What is going to happen with all the vehicles that stand on the road, the delivery vehicles? When you've got one lane, and, you know, it's terrible trying to drive, getting in and out, when you've got two lanes, what's going to happen when there's just one lane, and there's a peat pod truck, or a moving van, or a whatever?
That's a great question. Who's got it?
Can you repeat?
Yes, I'm sorry. The question is, what happens with all those vehicles that stand on Sheridan Road, bringing in peat pods, moving vans, to that kind of thing? Is there anyone who's got that answer?
There should be a representative from the police department, where there should be signs.
I know we're working with the police department, and I, my recollection is, I have a idea of what happened and what happened when we were doing, they were able to side streets, but they were not allowed to park on the main street.
There's also one question, what about left turns, left turns when you're blocking, when you've got one lane, what about no left turns?
Who's got that? Are you, he's asking, I'm sorry, I'll have to train myself to repeat these questions. He's asking about left turns when you have two lanes coming towards you, right?
Well, right, wait, left turns when you're the only, when there's one lane and that lane is turning left, and...
Yeah, we're going northbound and we're not in Granville, so we're not...
She's just going to let people go.
Do we have a traffic plan on that, gentlemen?
So let me, let me make one point. I think the issue of the peat pod trucks, I think during the, while the station doesn't need that, while the lanes close, maybe there could be a section there that is a drop-off or delivery trucks or a demarcated area that is for those standing trucks.
Will we let them inside our gates to have a load and make payments?
Aside from, there'll be that three or four hour window where we have to work there. Aside from that, I'd say yes, there'll be three, when we're right there, it just wouldn't be safe at all.
But south of us or north of us, assuming that there's a safe parking spot inside the barricades, they will be allowed to. We'll make that move.
And I would, I would guess, I think, I'd ask questions, and my opinion would be, we're to talk with the police, and I would say you put the no left turns while we're working in that, in that two-block area, I would say yes, we could go no left turns, not to stop the traffic. They can go right around the block, it's not that far.
Okay, yes, sir.
Early in your presentation, you said something about diverting traffic to Broadway. Are you going to re-strike Broadway because even Superman, I don't think, could see some of the lane markings on Broadway. It's very, very dangerous. We, for the most part, stop driving it simply because the lanes are so poorly marked. Are they going to re-strike it, hopefully?
The question is whether Broadway will be re-striked to make the lanes clearer and make traffic flow more smoothly during the period right now when we're working. But the lane striking is already faint at this point, and you could add that into the trouble. Anybody?
I would say at the present time that that won't happen. I think that ultimately, we're looking to re-strike Broadway, but that will not happen in conjunction with this project.
That's too bad.
Yes, sir.
You indicated that there might be emergencies or where buildings are shut down for water. Will you need to come into the buildings and shut the buildings at their valve?
I don't believe so. The question is, I think, will we have to enter the buildings in order to perform the shutdown of water when we're transferring the mains, transferring the services from the old main to the main?
Yeah, normally not. Normally, normally, 90% of the time, no.
Okay.
Sir?
Yes?
Are you doing anything to reroute the comic buses, CTA, and also possibly emergency vehicles to the Broadway?
Emergency vehicles will always get first, that's not a problem. We stand aside, we take, they take precedence over everything.
CTA will continue on Sheridan Road, and we'll try to do is work with Liola or Western to divert the buses to Broadway. So that's something to do with work with Liola. The other thing, I'm not sure this was touched on in the presentation, is that there's a vacation of Kenmore, those lines from Devon is moving forward. That street is going to be open for the duration of this project. The traffic, if it doesn't happen on Sheridan Road, it'll be on Kenmore, we'll be able to go all the way through Devon, ease some of the traffic, not on Sheridan Road.
Will it still be one-way?
Kenmore still will be one-way, and it won't be re-striked.
Yes.
For those buildings on the west side of Sheridan Road, where their driveways are there, what access or non-access will we have, how much notice will we get with non-access?
Go ahead.
Typically, typically...
The question, I'm sorry, I'm learning how to do this. The question was, for those people who are on the west side of Sheridan Road and have driveways coming to the street, what kind of access and what kind of notice and cooperation do they expect since they need to access the progress?
Typically, those crossings occur within an hour or two, and you're across it. Sometimes if there's a water surface in the driveway, it might complicate and take a little bit longer, but contractors, more than commonly, give the vehicles in an hour of safety, when it's, when it can be done safely.
And you will work with the buildings, tell me if I'm right on this, Joel, we'll work with the buildings, and it's plenty of notice of people about what hours they can expect us to be right in front of the driveway, and if something comes up, we're always in a position to move a metal plate into place and let somebody interrupt it.
There are always notifications there before, knowing that it's going to be a problem.
Is it possible to get a little more notice on shutdowns of the big buildings and driveway crossings?
I would think so. It's pretty predictable what we're doing, there's always a chance of some surprises and someone would like change the timing. What do you think, Joel?
24 to 48 hours is normal, we're trying to get up with the two days, and then...
48, actually, we have no time.
With the bigger buildings, I mean, we also have, Department of Water Management has an inspector also, and that inspector will visit your building and coordinate with your engineer and make sure that it's done and that you're notified in advance. And that's usually done from our standpoint, the Department of Water Management, but then also the contractor will also give all the residents notice too, with post-notices upfront.
So I had a thought, you know?
Right.
But sometimes, I don't have a such a day off. Can you tell us?
If a problem develops, give me or the Alderman's Office a call, and we'll, we'll work with you or make some arrangements.
We also are going to send out a kind of a construction newsletter to the buildings, as well as hand flyer and that, kind of on a Monday weekly basis, so that people know what the plan is, working with the construction companies. So, we hope that people are going to be able to get notice in that segment or through, you know, but you'll have, very early in the project, you'll have individual one-on-one handouts with our inspector. You'll be able to... Yeah, is there going to be signs that say alternatives are up, so that people don't learn about what's going on on Sheridan until after on Sheridan?
I'm glad you're...
There's going to be signage in bold, the northbound and the southbound, saying that there is construction. Okay, because actually, today's the first day I saw Lake Shore Drive, it says construction started July 31st. Was there the other day? Thank you. And I have a suggestion, okay? You can do what you want. I would suggest that if somebody is on Sheridan, they're going to make a left on Lake Shore Drive, as well as on Broadway, going to make a left on Hollywood-Petersson to go on Lake Shore Drive. There are left turn signs. Is there any way you can do something to extend the length of those turn circles? And that would probably help to examine, because I live on Sheridan nights, or see, I see how crowded it gets now, four lanes, and when one lane is going to be gone, and I, the thing about the cones to make the lane smaller, that is an absolute guarantee of bumper to bumper, slow movement for a pretty long time. So is there any way you can make those turn circles any longer? Department of Transportation is going to be looking at that later this week, early next week, to see about the capacity of extending the time of those left-hand turns. And I'm not thinking, and I might have missed this, how long do we expect the missing lane and the lanes changing? Labor Day, thank you.
What are the working hours for this project? Not start by the morning, it's nine to noon every weekend?
Nine to four during the week, the weekend, depending on the, what's the week price, seven to four.
If there's weekend work, though, we will give you ample time, leave time, as well as taking into consideration Jewish holidays that will be coming up.
But if you're done by Labor Day, are you going to, are you going to water main that is, how many of them?
No, it's like, by Labor Day, we're talking about the water main being laid and the services being transferred.
And the concrete cap, yeah, that's, that's when you do, you work a couple Saturdays, with the concrete cap on there also. So you'll have your four lanes open by that Saturday of Labor Day.
And when you are going to be working on Saturday, what type of notice, when we say ample, aren't those Thursday we're talking about?
We'll put a, we'll hit the traffic signs out, the arrow board, the head of signs that show the road Broadway. I mean, this road closed, drive standard, use Broadway.
Yeah, will that be a total closure, or are you...
It'll be a total closure, except for the emergency lane getting in and out, and people getting in and out.
Okay. Yes.
Paul, remember, we need, if you're not good at this, we need, we need voice directors and officials at, at Ringmar and Hollywood, I'm sorry, not Ringmar, Broadway and Hollywood during the rush hour, particularly evening rush, there's real block happening, every light change. You know, people driving around, there's a turn lane, there are northbound traffic that can't get through, because people block that thing on the left turn, and that turn happens because people block it when they're coming down from Hollywood on the other side. So it's just a complete gridlock there during rush hour, and you're going to need...
At Hollywood-Broadway.
Yes, Hollywood-Broadway. Really, the solution there, I think, in short term, is the traffic, the voice and direction traffic.
That's something I'll talk to the city about. I'll take that advice.
Yes, sir.
I know this may sound like a silly question, but I just want to make sure. So you said all of the work was going to be done on the west curb line? So does that west curb line main serve both the east and the west side of the street? Or is this something we're going to have to revisit later to do the east side of the street?
Oh, the east side of the street is, is served, there's a water main that was put in in 1960s on the east side of the street that serves the buildings on the east side of the road. So, really, the replacement of the water main on the west side only serves the buildings on the west side of it.
People on the west side are going to get 90% of the problems, so to speak.
I have a question, since Granville is going to be the dividing line between both sections of this project, Granville probably should be no turn security, either coming north or going south, because Granville is already tied up right now. And with the closure of the main, and people can be allowed to turn, that's going to affect our back manual of Broadway and all the others on Sheridan.
That makes sense, and are you talking about right turns as well?
I'm talking about both turns on Granville.
Okay.
That's something we'll look at, if we have on the west side.
For an hour instead of the day?
No, no, we're doing the same length of time, because the work is, requires that the trench be turned off, or... to all where they're actually working. But what I'm saying is, like, the valve and the configuration there, some of the east side buildings would be affected.
There, I know there's one other connection for sure, and then there may be two up on the north also. So there'll be some, it will be northward.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Did you just talk about contacting St. Andrews and another parking lot on Kenmore? As possible staging areas for your work?
No, I think you all were just saying that when they're, when they take, the question is whether we were talking about calling St. Andrews. That's what I'm saying. Is that, the question was, were we talking about contacting St. Andrews to become a staging area for our work? And I don't think so. I think what we're talking about is as an opportunity for people who might, during the resurfacing period, have trouble accessing their garages, whether the alderman's going to call and see whether it be the St. Andrews or this parking lot at Kenmore or Grandville will be available for people to park.
So your staging areas are all set, signed?
Our staging areas?
They're all on the side.
They're on side seats.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Well, Grandville, by being the dividing line, will you all be utilizing Grandville both ends? Because our building is bound to, and Grandville is Sheridan. So will we be tied up on both ends of this project? For our building down the west side of the street?
I think you'll always be able to get in off of Grandville, because Grandville, we don't actually cross Grandville. Maybe some delays, but you'll be able to get in and out.
We might not drive right, but you got a driveway on Sheridan.
But then you might have that a little bit of inconvenience. Grandville will be open, so you'll be able to hit the road for yourself.
I'm talking about, say, like, the water shutdown, work for Grandville to fly Grandville to go again.
If I understand what you're asking is, since you're right in the center of this thing at the dividing line, will you be affected throughout the entire project, except for the shutdown, every even?
You're on the south side?
We're on the south.
South side, hold on.
All right, then it'll be, you'll only be affected by the south shutdown, south of Grandville. Right.
Anything that'll happen is the alley behind Sacred Heart?
The answer is no. The alley behind Sacred Heart, nothing's going to happen. So there might be some signage about through traffic. The alley that's between Rosemont and Devon is going to be resurfaced with speed bumps. But I'll look at the alley behind Sacred Heart.
Yes, sir.
Um, does the Thorndale pop open to the suspension area?
The Thorndale what?
Please, please.
I would say no at the present time, and if it is, we'll let the city guy and everybody else know. And I'll explain to the church couple of the elders.
Any other questions? Yes, sir.
When I got this check in the chapter, and I know this from twelve years over here, that the traffic on Sheridan is all tied up because these things went on. That the alley runs out between Sheridan and Kenmore, that Sheridan Road traffic migrates over to the alley because you can go straight down the alley all the way to Hollywood. It's definitely going to be down to mitigate that acne when people realize that it's going to be tied up.
We can look at that and work with the police on that. We're not going to stop every single car. A lot of cars are going to find interior routes and take Broadway, so it's going to be a mess. But, but we'll, we'll have the police monitor that, monitor the alleys to make sure that, you know, we don't want to see kids wearing masks going over the alleys.
Well, Karen, now, you may, you know, be huge, especially if you're starting to work for seven to four, on the fourth flight. But seven, seven thirty in the morning, all the refuge trucks are in the alley. And, you know, how, uh, what happens?
That's in the story for traffic. That's in the story for traffic.
Yeah, well, probably, yeah. No, 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 only on Saturday, only on Saturday will be seven. Nine to five.
I'm saying nine to five, we, we think it's, and then with Saturday, it's seven to five.
Right.
Because there's no rush down with that.
Excuse me.
Yes, sir.
Um, is, is the water main work is finished by Labor Day? The other work, the resurfacing and the side roads and everything, how long is that expected to take?
Typical project of this length takes about sixty-five calories. Now, we'll talk about...
Please, guys.
It's about two months.
A project with this length, the resurface makes about sixty-five calories. So that would get us through about the Thanksgiving. We're going with the alderman's office about how much concrete work we're going to do. That could impact the duration, that could increase the duration or maybe decrease if we do less. We're, we're working on that.
So does that mean you want to start right after Labor Day?
That's still to be determined. That's still to be determined.
Okay.
The goal is that all the work be completed by the end of around next giving, because that's when weather hits and the project's shut down. It is not content to have the project spill over to the springtime of unfinished curbs. So that's part of us, CDOT's working on kind of finalizing how much work they can get done in that period of time. So I think that's, that's a big concern. But after Labor Day through till November, that work will be going out.
Yeah, but a combination of cooperating and that.
Well, I think there's a lot of that's the goal, that there will be something that's...
By cooperating, because we extend the working hours. Another one's longer time.
I don't think we were prepared to have a safe, so I think that you'll, and ask me to give us some time to crystallize the resurfacing and curve plan, we'll come back and review like this in the latter part of August and we'll have a clear plan for our planning.
Excuse me over here.
Yes, sir.
Uh, there's actually a question for Harry. Um, Mr. Osterman, have you guys, along with the resurfacing and recurbing, have you guys thought at all about maybe recovering a couple of feet on either side of the street and doing a center left, or a center turn lane on Sheridan to kind of ease traffic at all?
So that is a good question, and that is part of a northern terminus study, which is going to be conducted over the next probably five to six months. IDOT and Chicago Department of Transportation are doing two concurrent studies. One is the larger Lake Shore Drive study, which people may have read about. There's some meetings coming up the next few weeks about the future of Lake Shore Drive, which is a long, multi-year program. But concurrent with that is CDOT and IDOT looking at a northern terminus study to look at traffic flow at the end of Lake Shore Drive, how it flows through our community. So that is something that's going to be studied. We're going to have public meetings on to get your input and feedback. And options are on the table, like the one you just mentioned.
Thank you.
Joe?
Uh, yes, September fourth, Jewish Flag holidays. Third to fourth? No, fourth and fifth, which means we start the night before also. Sunday. There'll be over a thousand people in this room, because we opened it all the way up. If you cannot have the work, keep the holiday.
Oh, no.
We will make sure that that is not happening.
Okay. And we also have buses coming from six days.
We're talking, we're talking Tuesday night, we see, uh...
Wednesday.
When's the next weekend?
Saturday, Thursday, ten.
It'll also be ten days later.
Okay.
Right, Saturday. It won't be done, or will we have another validating connection?
We're, we're always very careful about that.
And make sure that the work will not change.
Any other questions?
Yeah, well, nobody has a question. Thank you. We have asked the alderman many times about certain traffic issues. And one of the things he's arranged, did you all hear it? One of the things he's arranged is that a traffic study will continue. Can you tell us about what that is?
Well, the traffic study is, the question earlier was about the northern terminus study. You may have seen people out for the last six months a year pounding cars. That is going to be, I think, the issue with how we look at the future traffic flow on Sheridan Road and Broadway and side streets.
But I think the one Loyola is paying for, where they would take a look.
So Loyola, based on the advancement, the vacation of Kenmore there, Loyola's got a firm that is going to come out and look at traffic flow at Rosemont and Sheridan Road and Sheridan, Kenmore, Devon around the curb. Additionally, the lights at Wintermont, Devon slash Sheridan and Rosemont, Sheridan are going to be upgraded with money from city, from my capital money that I can use. So then the timing of those lights can be a little bit more efficient. In a recent study that we did, we found that those need to be upgraded. So that gives the Department of Transportation some flexibility in re-timing the lights, synchronizing traffic. So KOLI is going to come out and study traffic and pedestrian flow in the fall when school gets back in at Sacred Heart and Loyola. And we're going to work with CDOT to work on the timing of those lights, hopefully will help with some traffic flow around the bend where a lot of traffic packs up. Typical thing to do.
So far, will there be any, are there any specific questions in August? In August, there's one. What? Okay, I don't see, you may want to say, hey, well, we have some ceremonies on Saturday.